Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, April 15th, just a little bit after 6:30. We have four members of council present this evening. Councilman Henkin is a bit under the weather and unfortunately will not be joining us this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite the young men from Troop 787 to come on up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So gentlemen, why don't you come on up front here? Caleb, you're the leader of the group, right? That's what they told me earlier. Caleb, why don't you just go right by the microphone there, pull it down to you, and tell us where you're from, where your troop meets, and why you're here tonight?
We're from Winter Springs, and our troop meets at the...
Church?
Yeah, at a church, and we are Troop 787.
And why you're here tonight? Getting a badge?
Yeah, for the citizenship in the community, Matt, badge.
Well terrific. Well Caleb, why don't you take the honors and help lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Gentlemen, everybody just join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Want to have a seat? The troop came down this evening for a tour of City Hall. I hope you enjoyed it, gentlemen? Yeah? Did you learn a lot?
Yes.
Good. We're glad to hear it. All right, next on the agenda is our invocation, and Chief White or Mr. Cobb, whoever would like to do it? I like how the fingers always fly. Thank you, Chief White.
You're welcome.
If you would like to join me in prayer, please bow your heads.
Father God, we gathered here today and thank you for the protection you have afforded us and in our community. We thank you for the many wonderful projects that are in store for us for this town. Lord, we come to you tonight but with one petition, and that's to provide comfort and healing to those who have suffered in Boston today. Pray for the victims, we pray for their families. Lord, we ask that you would provide intervention and you would guide law enforcement to fulfill their duties and see this through quickly and efficiently. Lord, we thank you for the Boy Scouts that are here today, that you would afford them and their family good health and protection as our future leaders. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on on the agenda, we're up to our first item, and it is a ceremonial item. It is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2012. Mr. Boop, why don't you come on up and give us an introduction?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce Kelly Leary of McDermott Davis, who is here to present to us the 2012 annual comprehensive annual financial report.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As Jerry said, my name is Kelly Leary, and I'm a partner at McDermott Davis &amp; Company, and we have completed the audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2012. And, next slide, please. One of the first things in the booklet that I think you were all given is a copy of the 2011 Certificate of Achievement. Every year, the Finance Department submits the comprehensive report to the Government Finances Officers Association in order to see if it meets the qualifications to get the Certificate of Achievement, and I'm not, I don't remember how many years it's been, but it's been quite a few years. How many?
Several.
Several, yeah. And the city did again get the Certificate of Achievement. And the first page of the actual report is the independent auditor's report, and again for the fiscal 2012 year, the city got what's called an unqualified opinion, which means it's the best opinion that you can get. It says that your financials are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles.
Yeah, I thought it was going to be something bad.
No, no, unquali-- yeah. Qualified is bad, because then it says, "These statements are fairly presented except for this thing is not good." But no, you have an unqualified opinion. And there are several other reports in this document, and they're all in the back, and they're what we call the, they're in the other section, and basically, most all of those reports have to do with making sure that the city is in compliance with laws and regulations, and that the city has complied with the various grant rules, because in fiscal 12, the city of Oviedo received both federal grants and state grants, so you were subject to both federal and state single audits. And so, the reports at the back basically say that we performed a separate audit of those grant monies, and that the city was in compliance with the rules pertaining to those. And also in the back is what's called the management letter that we're required to do for the Auditor General's office, and that requires that we just state certain things, like the city has an investment policy, the city did not meet any financial condition emergency, and we also put in there any recommendations that we have for improving internal controls. But this year, the city did not, we did not have any recommendations. The Finance Department has done a wonderful job of setting up controls over both cash receipts and cash disbursements and the utility billing, and so we really don't have any recommendations for improving that. Next slide, please. Right after the auditor's report is what we refer to as the MDNA, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis, and it's an overview of the entire document, and the overview basically compares 2012 to 2011. You know, it shows that the city's assets exceed liabilities by $125 million. Over 80% of that is the city's investment in the infrastructure of the city, the roads, the buildings, the, all that stuff. The other 19% is some of its unrestricted net assets, and some of it's restricted by either ordinance or state law. And I also noted on this slide that the debt in the city decreased almost $3 million in the current year. Part of that was due to just normal debt service payments that were made, but also, two of your bond issues were refunded and resulted in over $2 million savings to the city. And I believe in the current year, you've refunded more debt, but we haven't audited that yet, so, yeah. Next slide, please.
If we keep on going in that trend, will the bond companies end up paying us?
Yeah. Wouldn't that be nice? The MDNA also talks about the different funds, which, you know, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city, and the fund balance in that fund is around $3 million, which is 15% of your expenditures. And if you look through the notes in here, the city does have a fund balance reserve policy where you are required to maintain a reserve of 15%, you know, in case there's another year like 2004 with all the hurricanes or any other kind of emergency. The MDNA also addresses your, that the general fund budget to actual was real close to what you all budgeted, that the revenues were slightly less than budget, but then so were expenditures. So you came real close to your targeted budget, which is, which is good. It's a positive. And there's also some discussion in there of the water sewer fund, which had a slight decrease in net assets. Next slide.
I'm sorry, why would that be? Why would we have a decrease in assets in the water and sewer?
Um, I don't remember off the top of my head. Do you remember, Jerry?
Just anything that would be an example of why that number would go down?
One of the things that, great question, Mayor, one of the things that staff is currently looking at is the depreciation in the water utility. We have noticed, for the first time since I've been here, I've only been here for about a year, I was expressing this to Catherine last week, I've had an opportunity to really delve into the financials in a much deeper way than I have in the past, and I've noticed that your depreciation expense here is a little bit higher than I would anticipate for a size, for our size utility. So I need to get into that, break it apart, and understand it a little bit better, but I think that your depreciation expense is a major contributor to your decrease in net assets.
Yeah. Yeah, because you do have operating income. You look at the statement on page 23, you are operating okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that are happening down below the line that I'm just developing an understanding on now, Council Mayor. As we speak, this next year is going to be a year of growth for me and the rest of our team, but it looks to me like depreciation is the major culprit, if I could pinpoint anything at this time.
Well terrific, thank you. Appreciate the explanation. I'm sorry to interrupt.
The last slide addresses what's called the financial condition of the city, and the Auditor General of the State of Florida requires that both management, meaning, you know, the city manager, the finance, all of you, monitor the city's financial condition, and that we as auditors also perform certain assessment procedures. And these look at the trend over the last five years within the city, and it also looks at the city of Oviedo compared to other cities of a similar size. And these trends looked, you know, some of them looked very inconclusive, because the city's trend itself looks fine, but for some reason, you look a little different than other cities your size, but that's not unusual at all. So to me, the assessment looks fine. The city of Oviedo is in pretty good shape. I really didn't see any trend that looked bad to me, so.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from Council?
No, looks great.
I do have one. Is the CAFRA report up on all the reports on the website yet? It's up there for everybody to look at if they want to see it? Great. Well, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Brief presentation and update, and your final conclusion is that our overall financial condition is in good shape?
Yeah.
It did not indicate that anything's deteriorating.
Right. And I, you know, it was a pleasure working with the Finance Department this year. I felt like they did a good job of providing everything we needed to get the audit done, so.
Terrific.
All right.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is item number two, and it's a presentation of our mid-year review. Mr. Boop, are you handling this, or Ms. Hayes?
As Robin's coming forward to give the presentation, I just want to let you know, we have also received, we just got the mail today, we've also received the financial certificate for the budget award as well.
Good job, everyone. Or great job, I should say. I think that's like nine years in a row or something. It's mighty impressive.
Thank you. Mid-year review.
You're up, Robin.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor, Council. I just want to go over the general fund in general, as to where we stand on revenues and expenditures, and then the enterprise fund. And I provided you a chart, as well as your quarterly prospectus, that also has the same information in, as well as the presentation tonight. But the revenues overall are trending fairly close to budget. The intergovernmental funds, which are the half-cent sales tax, are actually trending a little above budget, which is good. We were a little worried about those coming in low this year, but right now, they're trending, you know, a little bit above, so. Service and franchise taxes, in past years, as you're aware, we have reduced those budgets in those accounts. They are trending a little bit low, but right on target at the same point, and I say that because I only have four and five months to post to tell you exactly what the numbers are. A lot of those come in very late. We'll be posting some of those in October and November for September. So right now, they look fairly close. I think I'm probably within $100,000 of the budget, probably less than that, but most of them look pretty good at this time.
That's on franchise.
Franchise fees and service, service tax.
All right, I think, okay, so that's what's labeled, franchise fees and utility taxes?
Yes, and then there's, yes, yes, sir, it is, I'm sorry. But they are, they're running very close at this point in time, so they look okay. Transfers typically are 50%. It shows enter 41.67, because that was as of the period closed in February. Finance has not closed March yet. As soon as March closes, that'll show 15%, 50%.
Those transfers are budgeting transfers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Those are the ones we allocate from stormwater and water and so forth. And that's transfers from a revenue side and an expenditure side, but this one's just being the revenue side of it. And then license and permits, that's the other one, that's at 30% there on the graph, and that is because it's typically those are in the fall, or in the summer, excuse me, that we receive the revenues from those, so they're not due in yet. It's just a seasonal time to show those. But other than that, as you look at the graph, property tax, 92%, which is common at this point, we'll receive a few more in April, and then we'll start receiving delinquent in June and July. So those will continue to come in.
What is the typical number that we collect, what is the typical number that you collect in property taxes?
As far as percent, it's over 100%. It's usually about 100, I think last year was 104%, 103%, because we received about, I think it was 180,000 in delinquent taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
All right, so, but on the average year, just in normal tax collection, it's about 96, 97?
Just over 96%, which is what we budget.
Right. We budget at 96, and then everything else becomes?
That's right.
Bonus.
Bonus, that's correct. Last year was unusual, because there was some catch-up from some sales from past years that we obviously didn't collect on, but it was an unusual year compared to the budget trend of past years. But budget trend of past years was only like 50,000, 15,000, excuse me, of delinquents. So it was a very unusual year.
Thank you.
And then, and that just explains, the summary of revenues explains what I went through for you. The next one, expenditure accounts. What I did here is I gave you an idea of each department, and where we were at it at six months, ideally at 50% or less, but 50% is a six-month target. We had a couple departments that had expenditures due to encumbrances that exceeded 50%. IT department, they tend to prepay a lot of the software and hardware expenses in October for the maintenance fees, as well as we encumber some of our contracts. The same with public works, and the same with police dispatch was, due to that being a new contract this year, that was encumbered as a whole early in the year, although police does not show they're over 50% because they had open positions, but they didn't encumber a $290,000 contract in whole, so. The other departments all fall within range or below, and most everyone is actually in the, around the 40%. So everyone is spending a little less than anticipated at six months than budgeted. And then, explanation there again, next one, please. Utility funds. And I just wanted to bring to your attention on the utility, they are trending lower than expected. The budget was reduced in 2012, 13, to reflect a budget that was similar to the actual revenues in 11, 12. But with that being said, a lot of our water revenues are in May to June, June to July, August, so it's not unusual. I just wanted to bring it to your attention so that you would see that we are just below the 50% mark. I think it's 47% or so in your prospectus, 46. something, and that's where we are on the enterprise fund. And then, I looked at the impact fees. Those are all trending very nicely. Actually, we may pick up a few dollars there at the end of the year on budget and decide to either make that adjustment or into next year's budget for fund balance. Building services are trending normal to meet the budgetary expectations. Those may change with some of the changes we have coming up with Oviedo and the park toward the end of the year, and we may need to make those adjustments, but those have not been posted to the accounts yet, to need to make those adjustments at this time. And then stormwater fees are also on target to meet their budgetary requirements. And at this time, that's a brief review of all the funds. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions from Council?
You did a great job.
Counselor, check, nothing, sorry.
Seems like we're looking good.
Counselor Breton?
Thank you very much.
We're going to talk more budgets on Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I just want to remind everyone, in addition to the mid-year review, the last year and for this year as well, we provide you all with quarterly reviews of your budget numbers in addition to this mid-year review.
Can I ask a question? What is this financial indicator thing that we have here?
That was provided by our auditors.
Okay.
And...
So this is part of the CAFRA report?
It is. Those are some of the dashboard indicators that we've been trying to provide you all with more and more information on all of our indicators, but these were the ones prepared this year by our auditors, so we forwarded that to you as well.
All righty, maybe you can just spend some time, give us all a brief explanation on what they mean and how to read them.
Sure.
Thank you.
We can plug that in for a work session on Wednesday as well. We'll have a few minutes for that.
All righty, moving along, we're up to the approval of the minutes. Item number three, what is the pleasure of Council?
I think motion approved minutes from March 18th and April 1st.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Moving on to item number four, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. This is for items that are not on our agenda. I have two written requests this evening, and the first one is from Ed Reardon. Ed, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak to the Council tonight.
Just real quick, name and address to the record and all that.
Sure. Ed Reardon. I live at 1793 Seneca Boulevard in Winter Springs. I'm here tonight as a volunteer and member of the Board of Directors of Honor Flight Central Florida, and I'm here to do two things. First, I'd like to tell you about Honor Flight. Honor Flight Central Florida is part of a national nonprofit network with a mission to transport our veterans to Washington, DC to visit and reflect on their memorials. Top priority is given to our senior veterans, World War II survivors, along with those other veterans who may be terminally ill. We have a sense of urgency about our World War II veterans in particular, as they're dying at the rate of about 800 a day. And I'm pleased to tell you all that a World War II veteran and a citizen of Oviedo will be traveling with Honor Flight on April 27th to Washington, DC. I'm also here today to thank leadership and members of the Oviedo Fire Department for their support of Honor Flight. Recently, I spoke to Chief Larson White about Honor Flight Central Florida's need for paramedics who would be willing to volunteer to travel with us on their own time and accompany groups of 25 veterans on each of the six flights we have scheduled this year. I want to thank Chief White for supporting our mission and getting the word out to Oviedo firefighters, and I want to thank Oviedo Fire Department paramedics Michael Stowe, Manuel Eldefonso, and David Barsky for volunteering to travel on Honor Flights this year and assure the safety and well-being of our honor veterans. Last, I'd like to leave the Council with DVD video documentary, Honor of Honor Flight Mission, in October 2012, and some brochures that also explain our mission. We'd be honored to work with the city in your support of our mission to honor Oviedo veterans with this very special trip. And so I'd like to ask the Council to give some consideration to how Oviedo might work best with Honor Flight to support Oviedo's veterans. I welcome the opportunity to further discuss the subject following your consideration. My contact information is on the card that I'll be reading with the clerk. Thank you very much.
Ed, thank you so much for coming down from there. Next written request that I have comes from Mr. Dan Roberts from Oviedo Forest. Name and address to the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Roberts. Excuse me. I live at 6038 Pine Valley Drive, Orlando, Florida. I'm here today individually. I'm not representing Oviedo Forest, and I'm not representing Estancia, who is the landowner of the property. Reason I'm here tonight is I intended to be at the May 8th, excuse me, March 18th public hearing, but there was a scheduling conflict. I thought I was supposed to be here on April 1st, and I had another commitment, so I wasn't able to come. But after looking at the video on, from your March 18th meeting, I decided not to come and did not want to be part of a, of a, kind of a lynch mob mentality regarding the Oviedo Forest Homeowners Association and also the Estancia. First of all, let me share with you that I've been involved in Oviedo Forest for many years. Years ago, before I retired in 2006, I worked for Ingle Homes, and I was in charge of their land operation. And Oviedo Forest was one of the last projects that I was involved in the development. After the market cratered, and I retired, the Estancia folks, who are actually part of a pension fund by the name of LACERA, which is the Los Angeles County Employees Retirement Association, took the property back as a result of a default from Ingle, and decided to continue with the project to finish it as it was approved by this commission and by the Water Management District and other development review groups. I think what probably concerned me more than anything else from this commission was the fact that on the 18th of March, this group became the prosecutor, the judge, and the jury, in vilifying not only myself, but Estancia. Estancia is not by normal means a developer. They are a financial manager, and their job was to protect the investment of the pension fund. My job, and I was hired by Estancia to be a developer representative, my job was to protect the community and to be a conservator. And as a result of the situation with the HOA and the developers' declaration, the developer needed to retain, control the project, and they appointed me as the president of the Homeowners Association. And as the Homeowners Association president, I had a very specific job. My job was to collect the money, to pay the bills, to enforce various actions, to enforce violations. My job was not to spend money that I was not authorized to spend. My job was not to do selective enforcement. My job was not to make the homeowners happy, as the mayor has requested in his May 18th council meeting. My job was to do what I was assigned to do, and that was to protect this property.
Mr. Roberts, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to leave you with one words.
Pardon?
I'm going to leave you with some words.
I don't think so, but thank you.
Chief, can you escort Mr. Roberts out, please? All righty, now that the fun of the evening is over, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address Council at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comment, move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Moving along, we're on to item number six, which is ordinance number 1566. This is the solid waste, this is an amendment related to solid waste. Ms. Brazil? Brief... solid waste, this is an amendment related to solid waste. Ms. Brazil, brief introduction, please.
Yes, thank you. This is a request to amend Chapter 38 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the non-exclusive commercial solid waste collectors. Essentially, this amendment creates a new process that will approve franchises by resolution and incorporate our fees into the city's fee schedule. This ordinance change will provide a more streamlined and cost-efficient solid waste collection service within the city of Oviedo and will save us money related to advertising costs. It is recommended council read ordinance number 1566 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Groot, can you read ordinance number 1566 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to non-exclusive commercial solid waste collectors, amending Chapter 38, Article 4, Sections 38-97 and 38-98 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, this is a public hearing. I will open it up to public comment. I do not have any written requests to speak on ordinance number 1566. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to do so? Seeing none, we are going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1566.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Councilwoman?
Good.
Councilman Breton? Councilman Schenk? This kind of just streamlines the process, I believe, for solid waste contracts. Is that what this is doing?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Seeing that there are no questions, and it's a pretty simple matter, all in favor of the motion to adopt ordinance number 1566 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we have first reading of ordinances. We have none on our agenda this evening. We do have a resolution, though. It is Resolution Number 2652-13. This is for an extension of the non-statutory development agreement and associated master land use plan for Central Avenue Townhomes LLC. Ms. Brazil?
Thank you. This is a request for council to adopt Resolution 2652-13 for a one-year extension of the non-statutory development agreement and the associated master land use plan for Central Avenue Townhomes mixed-use development. The subject property consists of approximately seven acres located on the west side of Central Avenue, approximately 2,400 feet north of Mitchell Hammock Road. The applicant property owner is Central Avenue Townhomes LLC. It is recommended that council adopt Resolution 2652, approving the one-year extension.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. I have no written request to speak for him, so I will move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schenk?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2652. You have 13. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Schenk?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Breton?
No.
Councilwoman? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item is a discussion item. It's item number nine. It is in reference to our recreation and parks accreditation. We have no items on this, so I will turn it over to our city manager, who I'm assuming is going to probably turn it over to our Parks and Rec director.
Yes, thank you. We just wanted to bring this item to you. It's our very initial conversation with you about the possibility of pursuing accreditation for our Recreation and Parks Department. It's a similar accreditation process, like our police department goes through, and Drew, as he's coming up, will be providing you with all the information on this extensive process that we'd like to have council consider. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just wanted to come before you tonight to kind of give you a quick update of how our department plans on moving forth with the accreditation process. The national accreditation process usually can take anywhere from a three-year, excuse me, a two-year to a five-year period according to the time period that the agency and how fast the agency moves. We're hoping that we're going to be able to do the process in a two-to-three-year period. Basically, to do that, we have to basically comply from the national standards. There's 144 total national standards. Of the 144, there's 36 that we have to comply 100% of. The other 108, we have to comply by 85% to be able to receive full accreditation. Basically, the steps that the process, we go through there, is a three-phase process. We do an agency self-assessment, and it's going to be a complete team effort because we will rely on several, several of the different departments in the city, of course, to be able to pull information from their areas that we need to help us with our accreditation process. After that, there's an onsite visit by the accreditation board that comes out and actually checks everything to make sure that everything that we're saying in a self-assessment is actual. And then after that, the commission's review and decision process. With that...
Who's the accreditor?
The creditor is the CAPRA, which is part of, yeah, is part of the National State Recreation and Park Association. After that, basically, there's, of course, a fee process. The initial fee to just apply is $100, and then there's a fee based upon total budget for us. It would be about $1,100 fee process to go forth. And then there's the process, we have to pay for the onsite visit by the people coming in, put them up in hotel meals and that type of thing. And then the process of actually receiving, once the accreditation is received, of us going to the national site to receive the accreditation. So it'd be cost for a few staff members who work on the project. Basically, it's a process that of gaining the understanding of everything the Recreation and Parks Department agencies do on a yearly basis. And once the yearly, once accreditation is received, then basically what we have to do is then we do a five-year, there's an annual review, which we have to put, send in a report, and then there's a five-year period, a five-year period of additional review. Each year after we receive accreditation, there's a $240 fee for a city our size for annual assessment fee. So basically, just wanted to kind of give you that quick report. If council sees that this is a viable process for us to go through, we will keep council, you know, assessed as we go forth with the process.
Any questions?
You said the agency was NAPRA, N-R-P-A?
CAPRA.
CAPRA.
Basically, it stands for the Commission for Accreditation and Park and Recreation Agencies, and it's through our national accreditation process, which is National Recreation and Park Association.
Okay, that's... N-R-P-R-A, yeah, N-R-P-A.
Presently, of the, of the 108, there's, nationwide, there's 108, excuse me, United States, there's 108 agencies. There's 23 agencies in Florida. Florida leads the way as far as the most agencies.
What are the benefits? I can play the video, but it'll be loud.
Excuse me?
I can play the video here, but it'll be too loud.
Well, I think for, for our city, how, what we've, what we've looked at, it's a process that will help us complete, do things in a different way, and also set standards, not only for our department, but things that we have to also rely on other departments for. Our HR department, finance department, things like that. It holds us to a higher standard, not only for the way we do things presently, but also beautification within our park system, the process of way we do programming and things like that. So overall, it's just, it's just, it holds us, I would say, to a higher accountability with recreation park standards.
Drew, does it save the city any money, such as like insurance, or does it help if there were, I don't know if we have, I don't remember any lawsuits coming across from Parks and Rec, but, you know, in any that, that manner that would help us? Like accreditation for the police department helps if you have a lawsuit?
Yeah, I can't say that it would help anything as far as insurance.
How about in connection with other agents? Seminole County I see is one.
Seminole County is one of the last ones that was accredited in Florida.
I see one of parks in, locally, one of parks in Seminole County.
Yep.
But Seminole County, how would that help, or would it help with cross-programming? Would, are there any, I don't want to say incentives, but, not even incentives, but because you're both agency accredited, that you're encouraged to, anything like that?
Well, I will tell you...
I don't know if that helps us, and I'm just looking at, you know, you've got two locally, Seminole County being...
Cities that are accredited are really held at this high prestige, you know, how they, they view. City of Tallahassee was accredited for a number of years. I know presently, I don't believe they are accredited at this time. Excuse me. I know that accreditation, it's, it's one of those things that, once received, it's a, by having to do the annual report, basically a stewardship report, you're held at that higher accountability to keep the standards that you have set forth at that same level on an annual basis.
Do you have an estimated cost to get through the process? And, because it looks like a lot, and I'm not, I like it. I like the standards, just like the police agency. I like having the standards you're held to and things like that. It looks like there's a lot of big, you know, cities, counties, Broward County, Port Beach, you know, Delray, City of Fort Lauderdale, City of Hollywood, Jacksonville. There's very large, which is fine with me. That's good. I'd rather be compared with that than, you know, so I'm just looking at how much, what our investment will be to get to that area. And then, I know ongoing, the year-to-year becomes a marginal, you know, you just have to keep up the standards and make sure any new ones possibly, but...
Our total, our total investment during the process of the accreditation should run around $11,500, no more.
I mean, personnel time. That's dollars.
Yeah, no, personnel...
How many hours and times have you, have you sat down and kind of given a rough estimate on what that'll be and what's taken into consideration?
We've got a lead person, Paul Beldon, is going to be taking the lead on this, as well as myself, and then also David Begoon. We will probably, during the process, we will probably be putting in, in the neighborhood of probably five to six hours a week routinely cumulative on this process. Now, with that being said, there is, because of the process of having to have other departments help, I can't tell you exactly what that type of hours would be, you know, needed to pull all the information from the additional departments. We can, by all, you know, if that's something that council wants us to try to do, we can, I can meet with other directors and see what they think that it will take as far as within their areas.
Well, I mean, one of parks has got accredited 2010. You know, they might have some information to share with us about that. They're close by, have a similar, so they might be able to just at least buy, you know, give us some helpful hints, and, you know, you may assume five or six, and maybe three or four, maybe eight or 10, you know, and make assume other, you know, so get a rough idea of what the action plan will be.
We, we've been in major contact with Seminole County since they were one of the last ones to get their accreditation. Steve Wearing, I know, who was their prime lead on the process, has been very helpful for us as far as the information that we've gathered to date. In fact, he's, you know, helped us with a lot of information that we would be, you know, necessarily pulling and that type of thing. A lot of the information is presently right at our fingertips. It's just a matter of kind of processing it and maybe doing some things a little bit better. However, with that being said, you know, we have to get information directly from HR department, finance department, some things from police, fire, that type of thing. And with that, you know, it's just, it's going to take some time for staff to be able to do that. What we had discussed with city manager, assistant city manager, was we were looking at just to be able to pull the assessment information. For us, it's probably going to be about a six-month time period, just to be able to start the assessment process before we would ever even apply, you know, or look at applying. Now, it could be a longer period of time, according to the time period it takes the other directors to possibly pull some of their information.
Drew, my concern is the time. It seems like you have a lot on your plate with, you've got the community center...
So I've got staff taking lead.
You know, Oviedo and Park, there's a lot, and I, and I feel that you keep everything up to above standard anyway. And not that I don't think that this is a good idea, but it does concern me of all the time, because I know that we are operating and everybody is, they are worked to the fullest, I believe, and you are too. I know that you are and, and everybody, so that worries me, to add that burden at this time.
Well, one of the things I would say, you know, and maybe, you know, when I say two years, three years, that might be fast-tracking. It's, it's like, you know, the accreditation process, I mean, the CAPRA actually says, you know, it can be a five-year process for agencies to actually go through this, if they kind of take their time and they do stuff. So we were looking at it because of the information that's, that's already at our fingertips. We feel like the additional information that can be gathered is not going to take that long. However, with that being said, we wanted to bring this to council tonight because we still need to look at that information from the other directors to see, because they do have to put time towards it also.
Sure.
So, you know, it could be a process that we could say, instead of, you know, saying it's going to be a two-, three-year process, we could say, hey, let's, you know, take a four-year process and do it. And, but I, like I said, I do have Paul that's going to be taking the lead. He has sat in on several, not only with the county, but he also has attended a couple of different things on accreditation directly with our, when we, this past year at Florida Conference, at our state conference, I should say. He sat through a process on the accreditation. So I think we, we do have a good understanding of what's needed.
Anything else?
You know, Drew, there are some good points brought up. It is a time commitment. I think it's a worthy goal. I would like to see you, my personal opinion, move forward with it, but, you know, some of these other projects that we have, they have to stay the priority. We can't...
Totally understand.
...push those off just because we're working on accreditation.
Totally understand.
So, you know, if accreditation takes four years, five years for you to get your first one, I think that's the concern I've heard from most of the members, and we don't want this taking precedent over other items, so...
Understand.
You know, it is sort of exciting to see what our benchmark is against other communities, similar to what the police department does. I'm sure the fire department has their own benchmarking. Certainly, finance has their own benchmarking and a wall of awards to prove the excellence that they provide to the citizens, so I wouldn't have an issue with it, but I have the councilwoman's same concern, that, and Councilman Schenk's concern as well, with time and, and dollars. I mean, just make sure that the priorities stay the priorities.
Understand.
Even though this can be considered a priority, it's certainly at the lower echelon of, in my opinion.
Understand.
Well, I think we, you know, like, talk about this more Wednesday, too, and lay it out with our goals a little bit, where we want to see that lie, but I agree with the mayor exactly. I think my, those are my concerns, are not seeing a real action plan that lays it out in front of me. I understand the benefits. Like I said, I think it's great, just like the accreditation of police. It shows the standards. It's very visible, and it gives us a high standard to achieve and get to. And like I said, I believe we're there. It's just a matter of documenting and making sure on other things that we have the, just like on the CAFRA, the written procedures and the written things that make sure we maintain that ongoing. So I'm not really, that, it's just taking time away from, as the councilman said, time away from other things that we may not have, and without seeing a big action plan. That's my concern. But I really like the idea thoroughly, 100%.
Drew, have you developed, to answer the councilman's question, have you developed a complete action plan, or is this, are we real early in the process and you were just kind of feeling us out, so we thought of it?
Yeah, what staff's done to date is, we went through the 144 total standards, and we've outlined how many are basically at our fingertips. And from there, what we have to do is then basically go from that and touch base on the other ones, because of the, of the 36 that have to be 100%, there's some of those that we still have to gain, you know, a lot of information. From the other 108, then, of course, we've got to get 85% of those to be able to meet that. So the whole plan is, because you kind of do the self-assessment, and the self-assessment is the process of going through everything, gathering the information, actually prior to actual applying. So that's kind of what you do on your own prior to the process. You've got the information laid out by the accreditation process, and then from there, we just kind of go through that. And because there's some things of the 108, there might be things that we say, hey, there's no way we're going to meet that, you know, and, or be able to do that. So that's why, you know, you kind of have that leeway area of the, of the other 108 standards.
So, so what I'm hearing you say is, is this more a, an accreditation process of policies, where best practices start to get implemented?
It's policies and standards.
Where we could actually be upgrading our own policies?
Yes, sir.
Or is this a, an accreditation of amenities? I mean, because...
No.
We certainly wouldn't need that. We have incredible amenities.
No, it's... No, it's, it's a process of standards and policies that the city will use. And it's also, they do look, when they come out and do the assessment, the visitation, they look at all the facilities, they look at what staff does, they look at your, that you've put the policies in place, that you have, you know, like a Bible that you would basically go by as far as different policies and standards that you utilize at each facility and that type of thing, rental facilities, you know, the process of how we go through field rentals and anything of our programming, that type of thing. So there's a, there's a policy and standards, basically a lot of the stuff that we already are doing on a daily basis. So, yeah, it's kind of that, it's that-
It's more of a benchmarking.
Yes. It's kind of taking a holistic approach to recreation and parks. And in that process, they're looked at a little bit differently from city to city.
Right. Well, let's see if anybody else has any other questions. Councilman Britton?
Well, I don't know much about CAPER, but I'm a little surprised that we don't already have a standard that we work to. So my, my first thing that I would look at is to make sure this is, this is not just some run-of-the-mill or everyday standard. I want, I want a high standard to achieve. And the second thing is, how long did you say this process might take?
It can take anywhere from two to five years.
Okay. Well, you know, I don't share the same concerns that, that the rest of the folks up here share about your time, because I don't care how long it takes you. I want you to go ahead and do this. And what I'd like to see with council's consensus is, by the end of this year, a gap analysis of, of where we are and what we need to do to achieve this standard. Go through the standards and, and the goals, and tell us which ones we, you think we achieve and which ones we don't, and how are you going to achieve the ones that we don't.
Drew, you did mention that you were working on what Councilman Britton, the point that he's making. How long do you anticipate that taking you? Real-time anticipation?
Well, we had a meeting, myself and staff had a meeting with the city manager and assistant city manager two weeks ago, and we feel very confident that we can do this process as far as acquiring the assessment and doing the assessment in the next six months.
And you can provide that back, so councilman, well, the whole entire council-
And that's, yes.
...can see the gaps?
Yes.
That's, that's an excellent point that Councilman Britton brought up.
And that's why, that's why I mentioned, we will be, you know, we will be bringing back a report to council to let council know where we are. By all means, we'll be making sure that we're able to go forth before we'd ever apply for the process.
And then, and then I would suggest for the council and Mr. Mayor, that we be looking at this and decide if we want to establish this as our standard, as a policy for the city, that we want, we require that we comply with this.
Right. So that would be more shown, once we see that gap analysis and what the goals are.
We need to go back and, you know, do some homework ourselves and see if this is what we want to work with. I don't know if there's other organizations, but this one seems fine. I just want to make sure it's just not a, you know, willy-nilly standard. I want to make sure this is a-
Are there other organizations?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Councilman Britton asked, are there other organizations?
Not on our national level. This would be the highest accreditation through the Recreation and Parks Association type thing.
Okay.
And let me, let me say as well, we, we have done an initial gap analysis, because we, staff went through it, and Drew brought this to us, and we did exactly that, to make sure it was something we even reasonably thought that we could pursue before we brought it forward. But we know there's a lot of work ahead on this. We, we looked at several of the criteria that actually do fall very consistent to the criteria with the Sterling Award and some of those Malcolm Obaldrich Awards, which are our citywide long-term goals for the next five years out. So we're looking at things that already work towards that long-term goal, because Parks and Rec accreditation is so policy-focused, as Drew said, in other areas. The, so the finance and the HR and similar administrative policies will also be looked at in the process, which is just moving us one step forward to the Sterling Awards, which we are headed in that direction anyway. With all due respect to the, the time that this would involve, we would, we certainly are very aware of that and concerned with that as well, with, with all of our staff. But we'd like to go ahead and at least start pursuing, setting ourselves in the place for having the highest standards we can for this department and others.
Just work Saturdays, huh?
Whatever it takes.
Anything else?
Well, yeah, if you can send that gap analysis to us, then if you've already done that, that'd be great. That'll help us to understand this better, because like I said, that's, we're coming here blind. And that, part of my memos, meetings about the memos is, we're coming here blind, you're asking us stuff, and asking, can we set forth, can we set this as a goal, can we continue this on a goal? And we have nothing to work with. So if we know you have a gap analysis already done, have some plan out there that's on paper, we can, makes it easier for us to look at that and go, yeah, the accreditation part, I believe we're all in. That's a yes, we definitely want that. But you're just, like I said, you're, to me, you're at this, you're standing here saying, I'm starting here, but you're really a little more forward. But I don't see that. And I, that's what the council, the councilman all said, is we don't see that. And that makes it, you know, makes us question it and say, so we can see that gap analysis, that'd be, help us to-
Can you have that ready for us on Wednesday?
Yeah, we can. Yes, we can.
Great. Terrific. Anything else? Councilman?
Nope, I'm good.
All righty. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
All righty, moving along. We're up to the city manager's report. Mr. Brazil?
Thank you. We'd just like to take a minute to recognize our police department that had participated in the Kids House kickball tournament this weekend. And Chief Chudnow is here to provide some information on the wonderful win they had.
So we can beat them in kickball, we just can't beat them in flag football?
Well, we did beat them in flag football last time.
Flag football this time, so we're good.
Oh, so we're back to Oviedo Springs?
Yes, we are.
Good job.
What we did this year is looking what we raised for Kids House last year, this being the fifth annual event. We looked at, if we got more people involved, more agencies involved, we could raise more money for Kids House. Trying to run a flag football tournament in one day gets a little logistically impossible. So we looked at different things and looked at what we could add, some enjoyment and some fun to the event, with some friendly competition, and I'll stress friendly competition. So we kind of came up with kickball, and at first, I kind of-
I just need a picture of that to send to the mayor of Winter Springs. Perfect. Thank you.
That's why it's here at the council chambers this evening, Mayor. And since I didn't know who the winner would, was going to be, this will be engraved come next week. So there were six teams involved this year, and a double elimination. The final game was between us and Winter Springs, and Oviedo did, it was victorious in that, we did have some home runs hit by Gabe Roberts and Rob Van Huyzen, and the final score was eight to four in the final game. Castleberry participated, some county participated in talking with Kids House, the state attorney's office, and with Orlando PD, they're all looking forward to have teams next year. So we're hoping to get a little bigger tournament next year. And it was a fun time. We had a fun time trying to learn the game ourselves as we were playing it, which was interesting, so.
Well, as much fun as it is to win and to tease everybody, how much money did you end up raising?
I don't know what the final count was. Last I knew, we were right around $8,000. And that was before we counted all the money for the raffle tickets and the food that was sold, and all the proceeds from the event were going to Kids House from our sponsors.
What about banners and signage for the street signs? Drew, we got those all ready?
Yeah, you can put one right over by the 417.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring this to council this, instead of seeing, it was, it was yesterday, we did get it in before the storms came. We had about 14 officers participating in the, in the event, a couple of volunteers, explorers played. So it was a good event, and it was fun.
Chief, did you play up in Winter Park, I mean, Winter Springs?
Right, we played-
At Central Park?
Yeah.
Central, yes. Because I went, I went by it, I was riding my bike, and I saw some Oviedo cars there, and I went, hey, I should go over and see what's going on. And then, but I just rode by.
So hopefully, when we get, look, I may be talking to you next year for hosting a tournament here. We're hoping for 12 to 16 teams next year, and have a real good tournament and raise some great funds for Kids House.
Awesome. Great job, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Brazil, anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Grude, anything?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
All righty. Deputy Mayor isn't here. We're up to Councilwoman Drago.
Oh.
You, you, report.
Okay. Well, you know, speaking of Kids House, there's a big fundraiser this weekend, Kids House Gala, I think it's called, or Dream Gala. It's always a lot of fun, and you spend a lot of money when you go there. Speaking of the Central Winds Park, I was up there, and I was looking at the dog park, and it's so awesome, and it was so used, and people were in there, and they, they're all divided. Is that what we're going to do, is have different divisions, or, you know, like divided for the big dogs, the small dogs and stuff?
Drew, why don't you come on up and explain that, please?
Yes, the dog park will be divided as far as size, weight, basically, and size. There will be, there's normally dog parks, when you go in, there's an entrance area to try to keep the dogs separated anyway, especially by size, because some dogs can be more aggressive, usually the smaller dogs, towards the big dogs.
Yeah, they, I think they're more.
So, but there will be separation, then there will be inside the dog park area, there will be shade structure areas planned, possibly some little dog amenities as far as some playground things, and fenced-in area, of course.
Okay.
So, and we should have a, something for you Wednesday night to be able to show you.
Oh, good. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
And then I just wanted to bring up one thing to council. It was mentioned to me that people who watch the meetings would like to hear more about what's going on in the city. So I was thinking about that, and I would like to suggest that we move the city manager's report up to the beginning of the meeting and let her really talk more, give more of a report about what's been going on in the city, what the accomplishments are, what's working, the, you know, like the awards. Because when you get by, by this time, most people, I'm, I'm amazed at how many people are still here right now, that they could hear more about what's going on with the city instead of wait until the end, because I think a lot of people maybe, may turn us off.
Why don't we talk about that on Wednesday?
Okay.
You know, we had debated that once before, about moving reports up front. That's what some other cities do, but then it involved, just food for thought, but when we discuss it, moving meeting times, and it just, everything, the whole dynamic changed. You know, you'd move your, your meeting time up a little bit to do your reports, so that the meeting time would start at a, at a time that's convenient for everybody, because if you did reports up front, then you're delaying the meeting. It's just food for thought. I hear what you're saying.
I was thinking more just the city manager. Like, we would still be at the end of the meeting, you know.
We'll talk about it Wednesday.
Food for thought. That's the end of my report.
Councilman Britton?
Okay, I got a few items here. Just wanted to announce, we had a ION meeting last week. It went well. The group is, is looking at some new goals for this year to bring out. I think we talked at the OCIA meeting, and I'll let you talk about that, Mr. Mayor, about perhaps pursuing boys' and girls' clubs as a, as a venue for, for the city. But overall, that, that group is working, working hard to improve their neighborhood. I'm going to send you an email. There is a, a commercial coming out featuring our Boys Town campus. Home and Garden TV came in and did a, what they call a donut commercial, where they come in and say, here's, here's our Boys Town campus in central Florida, and we came in and did a home and garden, a home improvement project. And then they do a PSA, and then they follow up with the, the after pictures of the thing. And that commercial's going to be out this week on a couple of, I believe it's the do-it-yourself networks or shows that are coming up. And it's very exciting for us, with featured Greg Ziblit, the director, and some of the local kids that are at the campus. So it's a kind of a feather in our local Boys Town cap. So I'll send that all to you, if you can pass that around. Mr. Mayor, I'll let you talk about the OCIA briefing, but it was very well-attended and a very good discussion. We had a Calno meeting earlier in the month, and I have two handouts. The meeting was at the City of Longwood, and I was real impressed with this program they have. It's called the Citizen Awareness and Participation Plan Program. And it's a program they've set up, I don't know, for the last five or six years or so, to where when a new project comes to the city, they require the, the project team to sit down with citizens and discuss the project and work out any issues they have out front, believe it or not. What a novel concept. And so that the citizenry is aware of what, what the project's about, what the benefits are, and any concerns get addressed. So they, they have a guide that they've published and a handout from the meeting. So I'm going to have the clerk's office print this out and pass it on to us.
Did they indicate how, if the meetings were attended well?
Yes, they did. I asked them specifically, and they said they were attended very well. And it's actually very beneficial to the development teams, because they know what they've got to deal with ahead of time. You know, instead of coming in and thinking they've got all their, their Ts crossed, and then finding out there's concerns that the city council has to then deal with and everything else. So I was real impressed with it.
Nice.
CRS rating. We had the email today, or this week, on our CRS rating, and I just want to congratulate Bobby. For those of you who don't know, that's the community rating system, and it, and it's a system that they, FEMA grades us on, on our stormwater management facilities. And it, by getting this rating, we get a 10% discount on flood insurance for anyone in the city. And I believe that I read the email right. Our, we've improved so much, we get an additional 10% on flood insurance, Bobby. So we're looking, our citizens can look to a 20% discount on their flood insurance by virtue of this, this rating that we've achieved. So I'd like to see if we can disseminate that as far and wide as we can, so that folks know about that and they can bring it up. And let's see, I believe that's it. We do have an ION meeting coming up on May 1st, just as a reminder. I don't think we have another meeting before then.
Isn't Calno here?
Calno is here, and we'll have, Kathy Till will be on the agenda, as well as the mayor doing a, a short state-of-the-city presentation, so.
On, just Oviedo on the park.
Oviedo on the park, yeah, that's what I meant. Sorry.
Short and state-of-the-city never seem to go together.
Yeah. Okay. That's it. Thanks.
All righty. And my report, we had, TOP had their historic walking tour on Saturday, April 6th. This year was kind of unique, because they had the farmer's market going on, on the same Saturday. So the tour actually ended at the Lawton House. And so folks got to go on a tour of some of the historic buildings up and down Lake Jessup, and then they ended up at the museum facility to actually see how what they saw fit in. So it really worked out very well. And the farmer's market, once again, looked very crowded, chief?
Hopefully.
You guys are just, you know, everybody over there, and I know there's a new president now, right? Desta Horner is the president of Oviedo Historical Society. That, that gavel passed yet?
Hopefully, more likely.
But chief, you've done an incredible job as the president of that group. Has it been two or three years?
Uh, three years.
Three years. So, you know, congratulations to you and what you and the entire group have accomplished. And, you know, I do believe that Desta has a lot of enthusiasm about continuing all the great work that has, have been done so far. So congratulations to everybody. We did have a state-of-the-city for OCIA, and a, it was open to the community, and there were members from Johnson Hill, there were members from the community. The meeting went very well. That was last Monday evening, and as Councilman Britton said, it was well-attended. There must have been at least 40 people in attendance, and it was good to go through the meeting and go through all the items that, that we have coming up in the city. Now, staff did put the PowerPoint for the state-of-the-city is now up on the website, so the slides are there. If anybody wants to take a peek at it, you can kind of get a feel for what's, what's coming and what's not coming. We have to figure out a way, somebody told me there's a way to add a narrative to the PowerPoint. So- told me there's a way to add a narrative to the PowerPoint. So, that could be something that we should consider. So, that way when folks look at the slide, at least they'll have a little narrative on each slide as, as they look at it. But the meeting was well-attended and I think it really explained a lot of the, the goals and how everything in the city fits together. Because I think that's the biggest issue right now that most of the residents have is we as a council go out and we speak with everyone, except they see all these parts happening and they don't see how it all fits together. So, the slideshow that's up on the website really kind of fits it all together for you and gives you an idea of all the different moving parts that council and the staff have out there right now and really where we're going. I mean, those goals that we have set over the years are really starting to come into focus now. And all the seeds that we've planted over the years are, are starting to come into fruition. So, it is a very exciting time as the five of us sit here and actually get to see it all starting to occur. We also did a similar meeting for the residents of Kingsbridge on Wednesday night it was. And again, that one was very well-attended. The residents had some concerns with Oviedo on the park coming up out of the ground. It's obviously next to their subdivision. But, you know, again, I'm happy to report that when everybody left, I would really say that they were very impressed on what's happening, why it's happening and how it's happening. So, we will, all five of us are available, the PowerPoint's available. Invite any one of us out. We'll come out and run through it. And, you know, it does probably take about 35 minutes to get through the whole thing, maybe 45 minutes. But it is well worth it when we're done. And you'll really get an idea of just how great the city is going to become. I mean, it's, it's really good and really exciting now. It's really going to be exceptional as we continue down the path. But that will be the end of my report this evening. We'll turn it over to Councilman Schenk.
Yesterday, I was at the library for the time capsule. That was, they're not going to bury it. They've found, they've heard that people who bury time capsules a lot of the time can't find them in the 50 years later when they're going to look for them. So, they'll have it, they'll have it out for a year so you can see it and then they'll put it in a prominent place, et cetera. Lawrence was out there also and had some great stuff representing the Historical Society and the Fire Department. There are some great slides that, I don't know if you've seen them before, those were some phenomenal pictures that were really nice to see. But it was great seeing everybody out there and putting the information into the time capsule. That in 50 years, you guys, if you're around, go check it out and see what's came out, how things have changed since then. The Sinister Academies tomorrow night at the mall. So, we're going to look forward to that.
Thank you.
Another thing for Lawrence, you know, when Mr. Reardon here was talking about the home flight, you know, I'm proud to hear that three of our aromatic firefighters stepped up and are participating. I think that's great. And it makes me feel great that those guys are doing that. That's really wonderful. Shane Kelly on Sundays, what's Shane Kelly supposed to be on Sundays? Tell me how it's supposed to be set up with that side gate. Please.
Presently, 1:00 to 6:00, field is open, side gates open, plus the front gate area.
Is the big gate supposed to be open? The drive-in gate?
Driving gate's open, except for on holidays. We are closing on holidays.
Walk-through gate was open yesterday.
I'll have to check with staff. Should have been open.
I drove by there yesterday. That's all. I just wanted to try, I saw the cones have gone. I think it's supposed to be out there, but I wasn't, I really wasn't 100% sure how it's supposed to be set up. So, but yeah, that wasn't done.
I'll check and send you notice.
Yeah, I said the walk-through gate was unlocked, but the big gate was on. Council for Wednesday, if I can ask, just, I'm just asking, you know, we, probably for our budget discussion, we do have, I'm sure a list of some things we're going to discuss. We said dog park already. Can we get that list? I just, again, you know, I'd like to be a little more ahead of the game on what we're going to be discussing so I can have some ideas and thoughts. If there is any list made, if it's two things, then two. If it's just we're going off the cuff, then I understand. But, you know, if you said, oh, dog park, that'll be there Wednesday night. Okay, just, I'm sure we have something...
Yeah, we just, we just jotted down, I think, about three things that you all asked for, for Wednesday night. And we'll, we'll certainly accommodate those.
Last time you told us there were like six things. That's why we moved that one to here tonight. Was my email about moving the accreditation here was based on, there's like six things. They'll probably be about 10 minutes apiece, take about an hour at the time.
Right.
So, I don't know what those six things are, but dog park seems to be one of them.
Yeah, and we have adjusted several of those because we wanted to make sure that we had enough time to do the strategic planning part and allow you all the opportunity to tell us if there were any budget priorities to add to that. So, we just have a list of things that we have heard council bring up in the past. And we wanted to give you the opportunity to give us any direction on those items. We'll try to compile a list of those items that we have, including the three that were mentioned tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, the other thing is on, for presentation, I was thinking about the iPad and the software. Aren't we supposed to be able to see presentations on the iPad? Wasn't there a whole discussion about that? So, we can, any presentation up there could be on our iPad at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. I've never seen it work. We've had it, we've had multiple presentations being done for us. So, I would just like to see, it just clicked in my head again as part of our checklist of things that we were expecting from that software to do.
I'll certainly check with that, too.
It just was one of those, you know, we were talking presentations. Last week we got a presentation, last meeting we had a presentation and some other presentations that were more, more detailed than the ones we got tonight. I mean, the ones we had tonight were, but they were more detailed than the ones we had tonight. It just clicked in my head and went, you know, if this is supposed to be able to pop down on here, that was one of the cool things that was supposed to happen. Has it changed up there? It's supposed to change down here. So, just...
We'll certainly check on that for you.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Schenk. As far as the PowerPoints and stuff, I mean, you are definitely correct about that. But another way to cure that is just load them up into the software as we download the software. And then the PowerPoint is right on the tablet already. And we can just follow them along as we go, as opposed to, you know, printing out sheets and such. And then the citizens get to see it when they go out on the website. So, I know that's a goal that we're going to work towards. And, you know, anything that's out there, just load it into this agenda so that when we download it, then we can just watch it here in front of us as we go. I think what Councilman Schenk was talking about was SharePoint or something, but whatever. I would like to find out about that. As far as Wednesday night, I mean, I do have to agree with the councilmen. I mean, you know, we're walking into Wednesday night a little bit blind and we don't even have an agenda. I mean, you know, we, in order for me to facilitate the meeting, I need to know what I'm supposed to facilitate. So, if we can have an agenda printed with how I'm supposed to run this meeting or keep this meeting going, and how the five of us are supposed to interact throughout the meeting, and what you expect from us, I think it would be very helpful. And anything that you can provide us would be, I think, greatly appreciated. Future meeting dates. As we've mentioned, Wednesday, April 17th at 5:00 PM, we have strategic planning. That is over at the Mall Community Center. On Monday, April 22nd, 5:30 PM, we have a work session. On Monday, May 6th, it is a regular session at 6:30. Monday, May 20th, regular session, 6:30. Tuesday, May 28th is a 5:30 PM work session. Everything I just mentioned is here at City Hall. On Monday, June 3rd, there is no meeting. So, the meeting in June will be the second meeting, it'll be the 17th, I'm going to assume, at 6:30. So, with everything being said, it's about five minutes of eight and this meeting is adjourned.